I'd like to call the meeting of the City Commissioner of the City of Palatka to order for the meeting of August 16, 2012. I extend a welcome on behalf of our City Commission to all of our attendees tonight. Going to ask Sister Sheila McCoy to deliver our invocation. Sheila is the pastor of God's Man of Church, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Chief Gary Getchel. Would you please stand?
Father, we thank you for the privilege to open these meetings in prayer. Father, please don't have us take it for granted. God, we need your guidance. We need your wisdom as we've been studying in Solomon, as he prayed for Jerusalem. So we pray for your leadership and your guidance and your influence over this body of governing officials for the City of Palatka, the largest city in Putnam County. We will give you praise, honor, and glory, for we have come in no other name but your Son Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please? Present.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Kitchens?
Present.
Commissioner Leary?
Here.
Commissioner Norwood?
Present.
All members present at the county.
We have a forum. We can proceed with our meeting. Commissioners, you received copies of the minutes of the July 12th and July 26, 2012 regular meetings, as well as a copy of the budget workshops we had, were held on July 19th and July 26, 2012. Are there any deletions or additions to any of these minutes?
Motion for approval.
There's a motion for approval by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Kitchen. Is any discussion?
Question?
Questions then called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The minute stands approved. We're in the public recognition presentation segment of our agenda. And we're going to go to our, we have a proclamation having to do with our MDA Firefighter Appreciation Month, but our firefighters are on the call.
They're here.
They're here.
They just showed up.
So I would like to ask Chief Lambert if he would come up, please.
Is that way to come in? Chief, is that the legislation from the MDA?
Yes. We're going to ask Kate Wyforth to come forward, too. Kate, would you stand right there? Would you introduce who's representing the fire department here, Chief?
Captain Britt Myers, Jason Pritchard, Park Guard Engineer Aaron Cunsberg, Park Guard Peter Zimber.
Thank you all for being here, and I would like to introduce Kate Wyforth from Muscular Dystrophy Association. City Palatka Proclamation. Whereas hundreds of dedicated and selfless firefighters in our state provide vital and life-saving services to the citizens of their communities. At a moment's notice, these men and women risk their lives by subduing fires and rescuing those trapped in infernos, as well as saving citizens from emergencies that could have been deadly situations. And whereas firefighters contribute significantly to the continued well-being of the City of Palatka through their outstanding commitment to community service, their sense of duty and responsibility is evidenced by their hundreds of volunteer hours and annual boot drives to collect funds to fight muscular dystrophy. And whereas for the past 50 years, firefighters throughout the City of Palatka and the nation have worked with Muscular Dystrophy Association to eradicate the muscular dystrophies, Lou Gehrig's disease, myasthenia gravis, and other neuromuscular diseases. And whereas many of the City of Palatka citizens have benefited from the funds raised by firefighters in the Phil Aboot Campaign, and these public servants make invaluable contributions to our city in all the tasks they perform. Now therefore, I Vernon Myers, Mayor of the City of Palatka, Florida, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2012 as Muscular Dystrophy Association Firefighter Appreciation Month in the City of Palatka, and urge all citizens to join me in commending all Palatka firefighters for their efforts on behalf of the Muscular Dystrophy Association. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Palatka to be affixed this 16th day of August in the year of our Lord 2012, Vernon Myers, Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Alager Kitchens, Phil Leary, and James Norwood. Chief. I would like to present this on behalf of the city to Chief Lambert. Chief, would you like to say a few words, please?
We'd like to thank the city for allowing us to do the boot drive, first of all, and the residents for their donations and the college for us to do the boot drive. We do appreciate it.
And I would like to call on Mr. Wyforth to say a few words that she would like on behalf of the Muscular Dystrophy Association.
I just want to say thank you to the firefighters. We couldn't do without you guys. Your efforts in putting the boot on the road has been a lot of help. So thank you for everything you guys do.
And thank you, Kate, for coming down to Jacksonville. This time, I would like to ask Bradley Tilton to come forward with his parents, Ben and Sandy Tilton, and Sister Sophie could come, too, but I think she's going to take pictures. Why don't you please stand over there, please?
Chief will take pictures for you.
City of Palatka Proclamation. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America, sweetie, we can take pictures before we finish. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America was founded in 1910 for the stated purpose of teaching boys patriotism, courage, self-reliance, high ideals, and proper behavior. And whereas the current mission statement states that the Boy Scouts of America's purpose is to prepare young people to make ethical choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the Scout Oath and Scout Law. And whereas the Scout Oath is as follows, "On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to God and my country, to obey the Scout Law, to help other people at all times, and to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight." And whereas the Scout Law says, "A scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent." And whereas the Boy Scouts of America help train the youth of our community with skills which will serve them well in the future and benefit our community, and whereas the ultimate achievement in scouting is the earning of the Eagle Rank, and this is a rank hell for life, once an eagle, always an eagle. And whereas the attainment of the Eagle Rank takes years of dedication, commitment, and hard work, and honors not only the scout, but also his family and his troop, and his troop leaders. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Commission of Palatka does hereby congratulate and recognize Randy Bradley Tilton, Troop 248, for his attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout, and does hereby further proclaim that we are proud to have him as an outstanding member of our community. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Palatka to be affixed this 16th day of August in the year of our Lord 2012, Vernon Myers, Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Alager Kitchens, Phil Leary, and James Norwood. Chief. You want to take a picture of your brother and your family? Congratulations, son.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bradley, would you like to say something? Well, this is not only honoring you, but it's honoring your family, because this is attainment of the Eagle. It's a lot of dedication, not only of you, but a lot of support from the family, and thank you for that, Sam.
Thank you.
We're now in the public comment section of the meeting. Is there anyone in, any attendee who would like to step forward and make a public comment at this time? Please limit your comments to three minutes or less, and it's unreasonable to expect any action be taken on these items unless they're on the agenda.
I understand.
Would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Sheila McCoy. I live at 115 Pinon Lane, Palatka, Florida. I'm here to talk about the Harder Putnam Coalition. We had a meeting today, and Vice Mayor Mary Brown was there. And so she wanted me to tell you a little bit about our grassroots efforts that started over a year ago, and we started because of need. The Palatka Housing Authority needed the participation of other organizations with a grant that they had. I attended a meeting that was very poorly attended, and so from there, Aaron Robinson and I began to think about ways that we could use, and he liked the name, the Harder Putnam, so therefore, Harder Putnam Coalition. We are project-driven, and we are inviting government, nonprofits, and businesses to come to the table, to come together, to begin to collaborate, work together for the betterment of our community with the mindset of how we can help each other. This will not be the first time, this may be the first time that you've heard of us, but it won't be the last. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is any, I think Chief Getchel has been active with the Harder Putnam Coalition.
The other thing is they did a very successful bookbag giveaway on the weekend, and they're starting to really put back in the community. A lot of those kids would not have supplies for school if they hadn't come together and distributed bookbags for them on the weekend, or this past week.
Yes.
Well, thank you for your work on behalf of our community and your efforts, and thank you. We're in item three, the consent agenda. Item 3A is authorize execution of modification number one to the CD BG Grant, number 11 DBL4046402CO2 Downtown Streetscaping Parking Lot Grant to modify the scope of work and budget. No change in grant amount per staff recommendation. Item number 3B, approve airport building B2 project items, FIN 43053019411. 100% ready funded as follows. Exterior/interior demolition and renovation of building B2 per engineer's recommendation. And B2 is authorize execution of Pacero Work Order 12-29R in the amount of $13,500 for construction, administration, and inspection of building B2 project per staff recommendation. Item 3C, endorse nomination of Mary Lawson Brown for reappointment to the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust Board of Trustees, term beginning 10/112. Item 3D, appoint Laura Schoenberger to the Palatka Historic Preservation Board as alternate for the remainder of a three-year term to expire June 2014. She is the sole applicant. Item 3E is grant special request items for permit number 12-37, Third Friday Downtown Street Party from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on September 21st, October 19th, and November 16th, 2012, as follows, per recommendation of Special Events Coordinator Palatka Main Street and Keith Putnam Beautiful Applicants. And the two items are grant permission to exceed allowable noise levels, and two, grant permission to serve consumed alcoholic beverages on public property or street right away. Commissioners, is there any reason to pull any of these for discussion? Some will be approved. Second? There being none. There's a motion for approval by Commissioner Norwood, seconded by Commissioner Leary. Is there any discussion?
Question?
Questions then called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Consent agenda stands approved. Item four is Community Redevelopment Agency Business. Recommendations per 81612 meeting. And item A is approve change order to Dietrich Planning Contract in the amount of $443 for a new contract amount of $10,636 for additional services in connection with the CRA Sunset Extension Project, Laura Dietrich, Dietrich Planning. Item 4B, award bid in the amount of $21,875 to Designs Inc. for Central Business District Signage Program per results of RFQ, Charles Rudd, Main Street Manager. Item 4C, adopt amendments to the Big and Facade Grant Programs, Charles Rudd, Main Street Manager. Item 4D, approve South Tiff District Commercial Rehabilitation Grant Pilot Program. This was tabled on June 14, 2012, Mike Gagnon, President, South Historic District. Item 4E is amend CRA fiscal year to October 1st through September 30th, Matt Reynolds, Finance Director. And item 4F is adopt fiscal year 2012, 13 tax increment fund allocations as part of the CRA budget, Matt Reynolds, Finance Director.
Motion for approval.
Second? There's a motion for approval by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Kitchen. Is there any discussion?
I move we approve also, Mr. Mayor, that item, and item D, the changes that was made in the, in, to the South Tiff Historic Commercial Rehabilitation Grant.
You move approval as amended?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a second. Is there any further discussion?
Question?
Questions then called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Stands approved. Item five is a resolution authorizing an application to the Florida Department of State Division of Historical Resources for Certified Local Government Status. Madam Clerk.
Resolution of the City of Palatka, Florida, applying for certified local government status with the State of Florida in order to more fully participate in state and federal historic preservation programs, authorizing the mayor to execute necessary documents for certified local government program application, and providing cornective activity.
And this is the second reading, I believe, right?
This is a resolution.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Kitchen. Is there any discussion?
Question?
Questions then called. Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Kitchens?
Yes.
Commissioner Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes. Stands approved by a vote of 5-0. Item seven is a public hearing ordinance, I'm sorry, item six is a public hearing on 102 Phillips Dairy Road, planning board recommendation to annex and rezone from Putnam County C2 to Palatka C1, Eddie Stovall, agent for Kenneth W., and Diane M. Schwing, owners. Item A is annex ordinance, first reading, and item B is rezoning ordinance, first reading. And if it's the pleasure of the commission, we'll take the vote together.
Yes.
Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Palatka, Florida, certain adjacent territory, identified as 102 Phillips Dairy Road, located in Section 2, Township 10 South, Range 26 East, public records of Putnam County, Florida, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palatka, and providing an effective date.
So a motion for approval. Second? There's a motion for approval by Commissioner Norwood, seconded by Commissioner Leary. I think we have a presentation. Mr. Crowe?
Thank you, Fire Department Director. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have a brief presentation, because this is a little bit of an unusual situation here, and we learned a lot in the last few days about Palatka and about some of the laws regarding the annexation, and brush up on that. And we thought it would be helpful to put some things in perspective in the form of a brief PowerPoint. I want to thank Commissioner Kitchens for working with us and to help us understand some of the issues we're dealing with, and of course, Mr. Holmes for helping us, and Mr. Semble helping us figure out some ways to approach this. I know Commissioner Ward, you have a hard time seeing this from your eyes, but I hope you can see it. This annexation is a little different from others. Oh, yeah, that brings on that.
Turn on.
Yes.
Whatever does it work from that corner?
Ah, Charles. This gives you a graph of this, and what you can see by the picture is that purple line represents the city limits, and in this case, the road is actually part of the city, but the white area you see is on corporate county. I've circled this particular parcel question by Charles. There's two criteria that we look at per the statutes, which are annexation compactness and continuity. Compactness, this means we're not creating enclaves. In this case, this part of Palatka, you generally got the city surrounding, kind of a big area bounded by State Road 19, the city you can see over on the east, and then Reed Street to the south. We, over time, are trying to fill in that larger enclave. Continuity is a little more complicated, but generally, you need to be contiguous to the city limits to meet the standard. We are now aware, thanks to Commissioner Kitchens and Mr. Holmes, of a attorney general opinion that said you really should not use roadways to achieve your continuity. We have done it in the past. For example, in 1987, we annexed the Sheriff's Office and Jail area up there. We did that by annexing the road, and we reached up there and grabbed them up through the road. However, this is a little bit of a different situation than some other annexations like this, because there was more of a tent accompanying this, in the sense that in 1984, the city and the county entered into an interlocal agreement to provide water and sewer along the east side of State Road 19. These two things kind of work together, the annexation of the area up at 17 and 19, and the provision of low water and sewer lines. Really helpful. And there are some comprehensive planning policies that direct us, as we did in this case, to work with the county on our annexation and our provision of urban services. This is some examples of situations where we've annexed using roads. This is one here, you can see we reached up State Road 19 in order to get that continuity. The annexations around this occurred later, so it was not continuity except by the road. Another one was rolling hills, a long time ago, but we went down Hudson to get rolling hills. Two 19 Palm Avenue, a small parcel, which we annexed Palm Avenue in order to annex this property, whatever. And just up the road from this parcel, which is right here, we did the same thing with 901, State Road 19. And then the wastewater plant, we reached that to an easement down from Hudson Avenue. We do understand some of the issues with the continuity and the roads, and what we recommend in this case is we be consistent in how we deal with this in the future. So what we recommend is that we sparingly use annexation as a tool when we have road continuity, and we should only do it really in cases where we're logically reducing the enclave, the county enclave, like in this case, and also where there's available water and sewer. So obviously, it's an urbanizing situation, makes sense to annex that. I think that that gives us some guidance on this particular annexation, and in the future, it could guide us on others. So that is my brief presentation. Have any questions?
If we have any questions.
So he's saying it's all right, we do it because of the enclave that's there, we get it done with the annexation, because it's already had water and sewer running there.
That is a contributing factor. I think we're looking at a number of policy issues other than just the annexation criteria. We're looking at the Complan Directive of providing urban services and making a more rational attempt to provide these urban services with annexation.
There are mitigating circumstances such that it would be to our advantage to annex that property.
Yes, sir.
Thad, from the sewer treatment plant coming back north towards the Gulf Coast, is there sewer and water available from the plant back, or is that, or is that just, we just annexed that?
I am not well-versed with the line, the actual lines. I believe there are, but I don't know.
Mayor?
Yes.
I want to address the wastewater sewer treatment plant, because I'm the deed worker, I was the deed worker in the property officer's office that worked for deed, and drew it in. The way the property was described in the legal description, it was basically square, and then one arm went up. It wasn't necessarily like a road was annexed, then they just simply, they did the property, they ran a piece of it up to hit the city limits line. When the person sold it to the city, they sold it that way, and they retained the property on either side of that strip, but the strip is part of the whole parcel, so that it would have joined city limits. So that was clarification of why it looks a little bit odd that way, but that's, it does join city limits by the legal description of the deed. I would like to have Mr. Holmes give his opinion on this. I think he's, I think he's spoken with the city manager of that probably, and I think he can shed some legal light on this and let us know where we stand, which I think are okay, but I'll let Mr. Holmes address that if you don't mind.
Bottom line is, I don't think that what is being proposed is illegal. There is an attorney general's opinion that discourages use of a road to establish continuity, but as most of you are aware, attorney general's opinions are not precedent in presidential value. They don't, they aren't law. They're opinions, they're advisory, so to speak. And the only case I could find that is directly on point on the issue of compactness and continuity, while it mentions the AG's opinion, it made its decision on the issue of compactness. For instance, if we were taking a road, if we were going out State Road 19, a mile out of the city limits, and grabbing a piece of property that was stuck out there by itself, then I believe that would violate the compactness requirements of the statute. But in this situation, and we've all talked about in the past, we've endeavored in the past to try to fix some sort of urban service boundary, or some sort of boundary that we would recognize as being an area within which we'd like to see the annexations occur, so that we filled in areas that are past work right now and that run in and out of the county. State Road 19 is a very logical boundary to be established in that regard. We've got two parcels north of this that are already in the city, and we've got parcels to, back to the east of it that are in the city, obviously. So from my perspective, it is not illegal, it doesn't violate any existing law regarding continuity or compactness. It's logical in that it does bring in property that's not farther out of the city than property we've already annexed in, using some of the same guidelines. And as long as we apply consistent policy in the future, with, which Thad and I have talked about, and I think we're on the same page as to how we'll approach these sorts of annexation issues in the future, as long as we're consistent and apply the same formula and guidelines in the future, I don't have a problem with it.
That addresses my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Question?
Questions then called. Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Kitchens?
Yes.
Commissioner Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes. The ordinances, both ordinances are passed on the first reading by a vote of 5 to 0. Item seven is a public hearing ordinance amending the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Series to revise the flood maps for adoption. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, providing that Figure A5 Flood Plan Map of Future Land Use Element Map Series of the adopted Comprehensive Plan be revised to reflect recent Federal Emergency Management Agency Flood Plan Map Changes, providing proseverability and providing an effective date.
So moved?
There's a motion by Commissioner Kitchen, seconded by Commissioner Norwood. I'll let Mr. Holmes address that if you don't mind.
Bottom line is, I don't think that what is being proposed is illegal. There is an attorney general's opinion that discourages use of a road to establish contiguity. But as most of you are aware, attorney general's opinions are not precedent in presidential value. They aren't law. They're opinions. They're advisory, so to speak. And the only case I could find that is directly on point on the issue of compactness and contiguity, while it mentions the AG's opinion, it made its decision on the issue of compactness. For instance, if we were taking a road, if we were going out State Road 19, a mile out of the city limits, and grabbing a piece of property that was stuck out there by itself, then I believe that would violate the compactness requirements of the statute. But in this situation, and we've all talked about in the past, we've endeavored in the past to try to fix some sort of urban service boundary or some sort of boundary that we would recognize as being an area within which we'd like to see the annexations occur so that we filled in areas that are past work right now and that run in and out of the county. State Road 19 is a very logical boundary to be established in that regard. We've got two parcels north of this that are already in the city. And we've got parcels to, back to the east of it that are in the city, obviously. So from my perspective, it is not illegal. It doesn't violate any existing law regarding contiguity or compactness. It's logical in that it does bring in property that's not farther out of the city than property we've already annexed in using some of the same guidelines. And as long as we apply consistent policy in the future, which Thad and I have talked about, and I think we are on the same page as to how we'll approach these sorts of annexation issues in the future, as long as we're consistent and apply the same formula and guidelines in the future, I don't have a problem with it.
That addresses my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Please.
Question's been called. Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Kitchens?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes. The ordinances, both ordinances are passed on the first reading by a vote of five to zero. Item seven is a public hearing ordinance amending the comprehensive plan Future Land Use Map Series to revise the flood maps for adoption. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, providing that Figure A5 Flood Plan Map of Future Land Use Element Map Series of the adopted comprehensive plan be revised to reflect recent Federal Emergency Management Agency flood plan map changes, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Some move?
There's a motion by Commissioner Kitchens, seconded by Commissioner Norwood. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to make a statement? There being none, we'll close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. Has a question been called? Question's been called. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kitchens?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes. The ordinance is adopted by a vote of five to zero. Item eight is an ordinance amending Section 95-151 of the Palatka Municipal Code to Limit Sales Items in Outdoor Promotional Temporary Goods and Commodity Sales. Second reading for adoption.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, amending Section 94-151 to limit sales items in outdoor promotional sales and temporary goods and commodity sales to those items that are customarily offered for sale by the principal use occupying the property, requiring that such sales be associated with a business occupying the property, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Some move?
There's a motion by Commissioner Kitchens, seconded by Commissioner Brown. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address this issue? There being none, we'll close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Question?
Question's been called. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Kitchens? Mayor Myers?
Yes. It stands adopted by a vote of five to zero. Item nine is an ordinance amending the Municipal Code to amend the Palatka General Employees' Retirement Plan Investment Policy. Second reading for adoption.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, revising the code of ordinances of the City of Palatka, Florida by amending the investment policy statement of the City of Palatka General Employees' Retirement Plan, amending Section 2-204 Investment Performance Objections, amending Section 2-205 Investment Guidelines, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Some motion by Commissioner Norwood, seconded by Commissioner Leary. We'll open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address this issue? There being none, we'll close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Question?
Question's been called. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Kitchens?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes.
It's adopted by a vote of five to zero. Administrative reports, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Just four quick things. The first one, I wanted just to talk briefly about the request from the city to the gas authority for the $500,000 contribution to the city. That request was taken up at a commission meeting. The commission voted to move forward with that request on or about July 28th. And this is just from memory. I sent a letter to the gas authority requesting the payment within 30 days. We didn't hear anything official from the gas authority, but we did hear some rumor and innuendo that that may have caused some financial difficulty for the gas authority because of their current investments and the early redemption of some of their investment devices would cause a penalty. So Matt and I discussed it, and we were going to contact the gas authority chairman and the director and sit down and talk to them. But before we had the opportunity to do that, I had a call from the newspaper asking about official minutes from the authority in which they are officially requesting a payment plan beginning on October 1st with five consecutive months of $100,000 payment. So I did talk to the paper, and based upon our discussions between myself and finance director, and our, looking at our budget and the impact on a potential payment plan, we talked to the paper and relayed, and then later talked to the authority that we thought that would be acceptable and would not have a financial impact on the city. I apologize for not making the commissioners aware of that, but that happened in a very quick period of time. Late last week, I did not receive official correspondence from the authority until after I received a call from the paper. And basically, my response was that we would cooperate with our partners from the gas authority and work out a mutually agreeable payment plan. So Matt, as you recall, the action was not an immediate $500,000 payment, even though that was my intent in my letter. So I just want to make sure that there's a consensus of the commission, that you have no problems with a multi-month payment plan in lieu of a $500,000 one-time payment. Is there any problems with the commission doing that?
Not really. As long as Matt says it's per our budget, I have no problem.
Okay. I don't think it'll have any impact on the budget whatsoever. And we appreciate the cooperation of our partners with the Palatka Housing, Palatka Gas Authority. Yes, Mr. Newfield, would you like to address the meeting, sir?
Please.
Please state your name and address.
Sir Judd Newfield, Palatka, Florida. And I do apologize too that our letter did not get to you before it went to the newspaper. That was not in intention. We had our meeting, and in our meeting, we, our board elected to request from you all that schedule. And we apologize that you did not get that letter first. So we sincerely apologize.
We appreciate your cooperation, sir.
Okay, that's number one. Number two is, we had a Main Street strategic planning retreat on Saturday. I think it went well. Charles did a fine job. I think the majority of the Main Street Board attended, so he's got some direction. I'm going to give that to you in your Friday packet. Very good information, a very nice work plan. Thank you for putting that together. It was very comprehensive. We're working together to get the budget finally compiled for our meetings in September. So you will be receiving the proposed fiscal year budget here within the next few weeks. We're honing in on some of the fiscal year 2011, '12 projections to have a more solid starting place for our next fiscal year. So you'll be getting that shortly. And then, just finally, I think tomorrow is one month on the job, still kicking, making all a lot of progress. Hopefully, I didn't make too many enemies yet, but some friends. And we're moving forward with a very aggressive agenda. So thank you for your support you've given me the last month, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of our city manager? Chief Lambert? Chief Getchel? Mr. Main Street Manager?
Street party tomorrow?
Street party tomorrow. We all need to go out and support that. Mr. Finance Director? Madam Clerk?
I just wanted to let you guys know to print on your calendar that the city is hosting the Northeast Florida League of Cities Dinner Meeting on September 20th at the golf course. And so everybody make plans.
That's usually a good meeting and...
Usually a great meeting.
Our...
You have a speaker, perhaps?
I can check with the league to see if they've got one lined up. Do you have a suggestion?
Somebody that's informed to give us some good information.
Yeah, I think I have.
Well, do you want to speak?
I'm just curious.
I'll take a look to see if they've got lined up. They usually line them up, but if we want one in particular, we can ask them to line up a certain speaker. We can line it up and say we've got our speaker provided.
For the benefit of our attendees, the Florida League of Cities is an organization we belong to as a city and the state of Florida. But we're in the northeast Florida district, and the meetings rotate between the different cities. And we're hosting at Nassau County, Deval County, St. John's County, Clay County, and about seven counties. But we rotate, and they enjoy coming to Palatka and going to the golf course.
Bradford.
Yeah. And Bradford County, right. So Commissioner Kitchens?
Two things. First of all, in today's daily news, the, I think it's the applause section of the newspaper, they have a very good article on the golf course and the children going through a golf course, going out and play golf at the golf course. Lots of photographs, very informative article. The second thing, I just would like, I've heard a lot of conversation this past year or so from various citizens at various levels, saying that Palatka citizens don't get benefits from county, the same benefits from county taxes that county residents get. And I've been thinking about that the other day, and off the top of my head, I sat down and I made this list of some of the, it's not a complete list, but it's anything I could think of that Palatka residents do use, and they have the same benefits as the county residents. And if you will bear with me, I will read it. Here's some of the things that the city residents get for their county taxes. The Putnam County Courthouse, which includes judges, child support, probate, civil and criminal trials, recording of documents, marriage licenses, divorces, the state's attorney, veteran services, et cetera. The Putnam County Library, the Putnam County Jail, the Putnam County Property Appraisers' Office, homestead and other exemptions, informational property in Putnam County and Palatka, the Putnam County Tax Collector, car tags, drivers, license renewals, vehicle registration tax payments, the Putnam County Supervisor of Elections, voting in the city and candidate for office registration, the Putnam County Health Department Services, including various vaccinations like tetanus, flu, pneumonia, and other community health services, Putnam County mosquito control, Putnam County Animal Shelter, Putnam County Landfills, the maintenance of St. John's Avenue from Mosley West to Ziegler, and the maintenance of River Street, Triangle Park and Sports Complex in Francis, and other recreation and parks, the Putnam County Fairgrounds, Waste Pro Recycling Pickup Service, travel on all Putnam County roads, Putnam County Vote Ramps, Putnam County Sheriff's Office deputies outside the city limits and occasionally inside. Approximately $500,000 of Putnam County's animal or taxes going to our three district districts, Putnam Memorial Bridge, Putnam County Emergency Operations Services, the Putnam County Sheriff's Office 911 and other emergency dispatch services, the Putnam County Ambulance Services, Putnam County Schools, even the few who don't have schools, children in schools, benefit from the education that schools provide. And we receive services from nurses, waitresses, cooks, and any other person who attended Putnam County schools that we deal with in our everyday lives. So I just wanted, for the record, I wanted the citizens of Palatka to realize some of the services that you do get from your Putnam County tax money. I just want to make sure they're informed, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Brown?
I'd just like to thank you all for your nomination and the insurance for us. I'm proud of you for this job I can't...
You represent us very well.
Thanks.
Counselor? Commissioner Leary?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I have received a call from Charles Smith, who's a former, I guess he's still a general contractor, but anyway, concerning retention pond in Tiara Woods. And I met with the city manager and the planning director, or had communicated with the planning director back and forth. But I think there's some extenuating circumstances in there concerning retention pond on that residential lot. And Thad did offer a couple of different recommendations. I just was hoping that maybe somebody besides me could call Charles and tell him what they were, who's not going to be happy about any of them. But maybe the city attorney and Thad could brainstorm a little bit more and see if there's some way for us to resolve this issue. What happened was is the retention ponds were platted as part of lots, which is totally unacceptable. I mean, and then the city accepted the plat, which we should have never done. And that was before my time and Mr. Holmes and probably everybody on the commission, except Mr. Brown.
Thanks a lot.
But at any rate, and I am concerned about the, you know, there are actually two retention ponds out there. And Thad did come up with a good idea about doing an MSTU, but that would require all the property owners agreeing to participate in that. And so at any rate, we did accept the, we did take responsibility for the roads, but not any of the drainage system. So anyway, that's my request.
I know a little bit about the issue and agree with Commissioner Leary. Apparently, I agree completely with his assessment that it should have never been accepted in to the city as a subdivision with retention ponds that serve the entire subdivision being attached to individual residential lots, which is what happened. So when the residential lot got sold, that buyer, whether they knew it or not, bought a retention pond too. But the retention pond didn't just serve their lot, it served half or a portion of the subdivision. In this case, Mr. Smith apparently bought a block of lots, and this retention pond was part of one of the lots that he bought. When he sold the lot, he didn't saddle the person he sold the lot to, he didn't saddle them with retention pond, which meant it ended up in his name. So then, as time goes by, and I don't know how it worked out, but I guess the city sends him a notice saying, you got to go fix this retention pond. He doesn't even own property out there anymore. So at that point, I guess we looked into it and found that all the retention ponds out there were done the same way. The person that owns the other retention pond, I'm not even sure if they know it, but they do. So it shouldn't have been handled that way when they tried to bring the subdivision in. Part of a traditional requirement is that the developer make arrangements for the drainage, and it isn't saddled on one lot owner. So now, we got this issue, and I guess retention pond needs to be addressed. I guess it's not, either it's not functioning or it's not up to the code or whatever.
Needs to be cleaned out, I think.
Needs to be cleaned out. So there's a, you know, a need to do something with it. And the MSTU, that sounds great, but I'm not going, I don't want to be the one that goes out there and knocks on doors and tells all those people out there they're going to have to start chipping in to clean out a retention pond. I think Thad said he would do that, though.
I thought Phil said he was going to do that.
Don and Thad, Phil and Thad both. Don, if, since these people have these retention ponds and they are a problem, would, if they deed it to the city, then we could go out and clean them out? Would that help alleviate the problem? I mean, since they obviously are unhappy with it, if they just deed it to the city that we don't, and we could clean them out?
I thought we already ought to be honest, because I remember years ago when they had some issues out there with drainage, I thought they'd gone out there and done some work with the ditches. But Phil tells me today that the ditches aren't in, that we didn't take the ditches, we just took the road. So I guess we're maintaining the roads, but the drainage, we're not maintaining. Is that right?
Yes, Thad, but planning director. Apparently, everything reigns to this particular site, or most of the places on the site. The neighbors actually had, off the other side, on the basis of overgrown weeds, not really the functioning of the pond, but just the condition of the lot in terms of the overgrown condition. Our code doesn't really allow, doesn't allow us to force him to fix the retention function. We can only have him clearing weeds, but we did, we don't have any problem sending a letter out with a survey to the lot owners, just educating if they have any interest. If we get a favorable response, I can't imagine it would be a large assessment, but I would need some assistance from Mr. Holmes if we went forward on this offense.
Well, I would ask the question about that because doing an MSTU or an MSTU, you're putting basically a fee on the citizens so that the governmental body can maintain the, either the road or the retention ponds. And since these retention ponds are privately owned right now, them paying a fee to the city to fix the ponds wouldn't help unless we own ponds.
It'd have to convey this to them.
So if we own them, then we don't need to put an MSTU. We can just go out there with some of our city crew, yank up some weeds, and we're good to go.
Those are wet ponds, if I'm not mistaken. That don't mean that they got water in them. I mean that they were designed to be wet ponds.
The owner has indicated a willingness to convey it to the city. He doesn't want it to do that.
Is there a homeowners association out there?
No. If there's not, okay.
We took it in without a homeowners association, too. That was before me.
Yeah, that was a long time. I remember when that deed came through.
Mr. Semble?
We don't want to jump into ownership of a system. We don't know if it works, the cost to properly engineer and design it and maintain it. We can go and look at it and see, we'll come back with the recommendations, but I would be hesitant to recommend that we take on any more obligation for system. We don't know if it's designed correctly and/or works correctly. So we'll look at it, and we'll come back to the commission and try to resolve the problem. But I don't think we should probably jump into that.
It's just holding around.
Originally, that subdivision was, was it going to be annexed? And it was, I actually reviewed the plat when I was planning director for the county. That area has unique soil configurations, and at some point in time, if we ever get back into a normal rainfall pattern or get, you know, have a hurricane, it's going to be important that that retention pond functions, because as Don says, it's wet retention and basically stays wet all the time. So I guess I'm just looking for some, you know, and Thad has, and Mr. Semble both have been very kind and diligent in their communications to me. I'm just looking as a way that, not to get the wrath of Charles when I've already been telling him what the options are.
I think Mr. Semble is going to take a look at it.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you.
Who actually regulate the maintenance of retention ponds? Is it the water management, is it the city? Because we had a retention pond that was over on 19th Street. It kept going around and around about.
You really won't talk about that one again?
No, but my point is, we need to make it clear who actually regulate the management of those homes.
Thad, real planning director. Commissioner Norwood, we defer mostly to the water management district. In this case, I contacted the district, and apparently, this is something the DEP, it's under DEP's jurisdiction. There's a certain permit you have to get in order to dredge or disturb this kind of pond. But from what I understand, talking to the people in the DEP and the district, it's pretty easy to get. I mean, they understand it's kind of a mom and pop type situation, and they're able to work with, particularly the city is involved, they can work with very closely.
I guess the question is, if an individual have a problem with a retention pond that's adjacent to their properties, and... that's adjacent to their properties and needs some maintenance, who actually regulate, who actually, what's, what's the regulating body that make, that, uh, that manage the maintenance of retention ponds?
Typically, the district, if it's a permitted situation. But if it's pre-permitted, though, before the mid-nineteen, mid-late nineteen eighties, it goes to DEP, who have the old grandfather type situation.
Well, and, and unless they have a homeowners association or an MSTU that takes care of it, uh, in this case, they don't have any of those, and one of the things, the reason is you don't see wet detention ponds anymore, just like the one we did on Creole, um, is because you create a wetland when you do that, and then you're under jurisdiction. You create jurisdictional wetlands. So, anyway, kind of a catch twenty-two, but...
Do you have anything else, Commissioner?
No, sir, that's a gracious plenty, don't you think?
That's good. Commissioner Norwood?
Well, I'd like to say to, uh, the city clerk, I will not be attending the, uh, League of Cities Conference. I do have a commitment that's been going on for several years that I have to attend,[1688.82]